Five seventeen, two thousand and seventeen work session for the Salisbury City Council. And I know we have some guests in here. Just a quick minor announcement is if there's an emergency, please go out the hallway, make a right, go down the stairs, or make a left and go down the other hallway if that's blocked, but please do not use the elevator. We have, let's see what we got here. Mr. Anderson from CQI Associates. And Ms. Moore's here.
Yes, very good. Thank you. We've invited Mr. Anderson in. Mr. Anderson of CQI Associates is the city's longstanding energy consultant. And we did bring him in at council's request. We'd like to take some time for Mr. Anderson to tell you a bit about what he does for the city, what he has brought to the table to the city. And certainly, we can talk a bit about the FY seventeen budget, and then open it up to any questions you may have, either about his services, about the budget, how that comes to be. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Anderson, and then certainly if you have any questions, please do ask.
So, good afternoon. First, I want to thank everyone. It's been a long time. We've been serving the city since 2003, providing support services. I will cover what those services have been. Thank staff, thank you all for this long-term relationship. Jennifer asked me to kind of go over for a few minutes who we are as a firm, so you just have a background of our services, and then really specifically talk about the energy management program that we have underway and we have been doing for some years. We were established in nineteen ninety-five in Howard County. We're locally owned, and we have clients all over the country. Our primary role is to help people identify ways to reduce energy use and cost, but we also have a significant amount of work that we do in green buildings, including lead certifications. You could see here the strategic planning, energy audits, energy retrofit projects, demand response, utility incentives. These are all programs that we have and offered in support to our clients. This is a representative list of clients. Obviously, the city of Salisbury is there, but you'll see we do serve as the outsourced energy manager to Northrop Grumman, town of Ocean City. We provide almost the same services to Ocean City as we do the city of Salisbury, T. Rowe Price, Warchester County, Auto Nation. So we have a really robust practice throughout the mid-Atlantic region and serve clients all over the country. One of the things that happened was we were one of the first firms to really get an understanding of what energy deregulation was. That's how we first came to the city, is when we were doing seminars from the Maryland Energy Administration on what the fundamentals were for energy procurement, electricity and natural gas. And today, we actually have energy purchasing cooperatives through local chambers, and you can see here Salisbury Area Chamber, Ocean City, Queen Anne's, Dorchester, are chambers that we work with, where we help all the businesses in those chambers provide, buy energy, either natural gas or electricity. And the idea is they, we buy in bulk and provide them the same kind of bulk savings that we would do if we were buying for the city of Salisbury. Now, for the city, in 2003, our first assignment was to help you all figure out how to buy energy in a deregulated market. It was new, it was innovative, it was progressive, and we had been helping the city, usually in twenty-four month to thirty-six month contracts, do a competitive bid to buy electricity services. We did do a small-term natural gas services for the wastewater treatment plant. And just want you to understand something is the components of the fundamental electricity cost, that's the commodity. The commodity cost is still going down, but all the regulated fees around it are what's going up. Something called capacity and transmission. And just look at this, the regulated fees in the last year went up fifty-five percent. So, you know, it's one of these things where we're looking for long-term budget stability, but we're also trying to manage all of these components to the electricity commodity pricing, of which the commodity used to be eighty percent, and today, it's only sixty percent of it. Capacity is basically when you demand energy, and that's why we've looked at a lot of the retrofit options that we'll see later. Now, we're currently in a contract. The contract was placed in June of two thou-, July of sixteen. This chart shows July to July, and you can see that back in 2008 was when the high point of the market, the market started to come down. There was a low point in July of 2012, and it's just interesting, we pretty much hit the lowest point in the last iterative cycle, as you can see by the little arrow. And today, we are back at that low point. So fundamentally, the last competitive bid we did was very favorable in accordance with where the market is. These are market rates going forward. Our current price is the five, I can't even read it at this moment, five eight six that's on here. And you can see the current market forward price is always higher. So we've done well with the competitive bid process that we've done, particularly in the last year. This contract does end in June of 2018, so we'll be going back into the market to see how we fare against what is right now the forward market curve. Our energy program since 2004, as we've continued to monitor our costs and consumption, we do a monthly review, we've helped with your budget forecasting. If we see any anomalies out of the budget forecast, we immediately start to raise a red flag with the departments and so forth. We did an extensive number of energy audits in 2008 and 2009. We have continued to provide ideas on the best management practices. In 2008 and 2009, we did staff training of all the users and all the staff in the city on ways to reduce energy use and cost. And when the economic crisis occurred in 2008, and people were looking to provide economic stimulus money for shovel-ready projects, because we had these energy audits in 2008 and 2009 done, we knew exactly what projects we needed to do. We were able to go after energy retrofit grants and programs in 2008 and 2009 with those shovel-ready projects at hand. And so it was a big opportunity for us. And this is hard for you all maybe to read, but we did a series of projects, about eighty-five thousand with the Maryland, Maryland Energy Administration and Power Grants. Then we got a DOE block grant, that's the stimulus money. We also got a Maryland Energy Administration loan for the lighting conversion of the LED fixtures in the garage. And then we also got a Maryland Energy Administration loan with the support services to do all the traffic light conversions. So that 2009, 2010 period, we did $625,000 worth of project work, most of, a lot of it coming from grant opportunities. So that was the biggest time we've done some major project work. And now we're at the point where we're looking at that opportunity again. From a fundamental way of managing energy, we've been basically taking this energy cost pie and doing energy management through those retrofits and other recommendations, but we're enjoying about a twelve to fourteen percent reduction in cost just because of the energy procurement. And we'll talk about where we're headed with this. From a budget standpoint, our budget, as you can see, in 2008 and 2009 was going up. This is before we did the energy projects. We were almost near the three million mark. When we got the grants in 2010 and 2011, we saw the direct impact by the next year in the reduced cost. In 2013 and 2014 is when the new wastewater treatment plant was coming online. We had extra costs in natural gas, and so our costs did start to spike. But then as that transition came, you know, we got that under control, we returned to where we've, where we've been here in 2015, 2016, and 2017. The objective is basically provide all the services that the city needs, but basically what we call flatline the energy budget, not try to keep the budget very consistent moving forward through these various opportunities and programs. And we've done that for the last three years. But one of the things that's been, we've been making sure that everybody knows is we're on a really tight energy budget. That means there's really little or no movement. If we have an outlying period, it can hurt the overall program. So that's why you see us in our May memo, really raising the red flag and say, we've got problems here, here and here. We need to address them and try to get the consumption and cost where we needed to go. I'd like to stop for a minute and see if there's any questions, because I know you all had questions related to where we were with 2007 budget, particularly as it related to police, highway, lighting, zoo, and water treatment.
I think the individual who had most of the questions is not here this afternoon. He couldn't make it. But we would like to have a copy of that presentation, so we can share that with the other council members that aren't here. Jack, do you have any questions at this point?
No, I'm just waiting for the explanation of what's going on this year.
Okay.
Well, just to tell you where we are, is we projected at the, in May, that we would just be about five thousand under the current budget numbers. The preliminary numbers, and we probably don't have all of the bills in for police, highway, lighting, and fire, is we're at twenty-eight thousand under the budget overall. Now, we have some outliers that are in this, but I think we're going to, natural gas, heating oil, and propane, we're almost right on the number we're at. We're waiting for some more bills to come in. So we, it looks like we're going to be able to be under the $2,261,114 budget. We're right now looking at about a two hundred and, a $2,250,000 number, in and around that number as we get, go forward. So I think some of the alerts that we did identified where we needed to go. The only thing is, some of the budgets that were put into the last year's budget numbers were not the same as what we had recommended, and we'd like everyone to reconsider putting in the number that's more representative of where we go. The way we do the budgeting is we look at a three-year average, then we look at the forward, market, forward weather amounts. Every month, we're actually comparing consumption against the last three years. So our projections are based on some realistic numbers. If the weather is a little milder, it's more favorable. It's a little worse, it's where it's at. The two outliers that need to readjust their budget, I think, is the zoo needs to get, we've got two years where the zoo number was lower than what we recommended, and it's come in at that higher number. And it, it's come in higher because of the new health facility that was there. And then we're still looking at why we see highway lighting numbers up, and we're going to do a little bit more of a deep dive on that. The wastewater, the water treatment number is up from, it's in the three sixty versus three hundred thousand, and that was because of the shift to the different wells and the pump stations for that maintenance project. And I think that'll get itself back in line with where we are. Now, all of the 2018 numbers that we have put together don't include the new wastewater treatment plant. We have a separate budget estimate on the, on the new wastewater treatment plant. Any questions on that? Anything?
What I'm hearing is relative to the typical business over the last four years, we're within the normal differences in budget versus actual, with the exception of the wastewater treatment plant?
Overall, we're below the budget. And I would say for the last three years and going into this year, we are pretty much in line with this, what I call same number budget process. So the answer is yes.
Okay, so the, what would you say is the accuracy rate for the last four years of projected versus actual?
About, plus or minus thirty thousand on 2.2 million, 2.3 million?
All right, so the issue I hearing then is in the wastewater treatment plant?
Water, it was water treatment this year.
Water treatment?
Yes. And then we've got a kind of, and then some budget numbers are related to the zoo.
So what happened, what was the cause of that, that bump?
The water, the water number was because they had to turn off certain wells and basically pump all the water through the Paoli plant, and that just increased their, that operating cost at that plant at this point. Also, they had a renovation at the plant, and I think there's some more improvements that we need to identify as we go, as it goes forward.
Is Amanda there?
Mike's here.
Mike's here. Can I ask Mike a question?
Sure.
Mike, was this an anomaly, or was this planned and in the budget?
As far as the work on the water plant?
Yeah, the cause of the over, over-budget item?
I think it was a combination of just Richard going out and seeing how the thing was set up in terms of the project, and when the top project came online, we covered it. So when, when all that stuff comes together, you're trying to make an estimate six months in advance, and then when everything came together, we ran into that anomaly where we had to hire costs.
Now, whose estimate was it? Our estimate or his estimate?
Run, what's that question again?
Who is, who made the estimate? Us, or the, or Mr. Anderson?
Oh, Mr. Anderson provides the estimates for the budget plug-in. So he puts those numbers in. For, for example, the two that we were dealing with was the water plant and the wastewater plant.
Yeah.
And then fortunately, the wastewater plant obviously is the stuff under construction, so there's a lot of things that have to be considered in trying to make those estimates with a lot of changes going on, and being fortunate enough that we were able to do the transfer and cover it without going into surplus.
Could you just refresh my memory? What was the dollar volume, the dollar value of the miss?
The transfer that we did?
Yeah.
Seventy-two thousand.
Mr. Anderson, just a question. Is that usually out of your range of predictability?
Well, when you're talking about the numbers that we've got in terms of the wastewater plant, I mean, you're looking at almost $600,000. So it's a little over ten percent. And with the, with all this stuff going on, you get, remember with wastewater plants, we get a wet year, we're pumping more. So that's an anomaly. Weather has an impact, other than just it gets dark sooner at night. And then on top of that, with the construction activities, so you're within, you know, that ten percent differential is what we've got. As we go forward, as the plant gets completed, I always think things will settle down.
Yeah, I guess from a, from a, just a business point of view, ten percent miss in a budget of seven hundred thousand is a lot of money.
It is in terms of overall. I mean, there's three accounts that, that impact me, but that's eighty-five percent of our electricity budget between the highway lighting, the water plant, and the wastewater plant. So they're the ones that are sensitive, and, you know, if you, ten percent adds up to a lot of money, and then you're looking to cover that cost from, by doing budget transfers from other accounts. So that's where we, we keep an eye on it. And with the water plant, we saw it coming, and Richard went out to the plant and did some investigation to look ahead so we could be prepared for this year's budget.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Thank you.
Just to add, though, the budget that we put in for the water treatment plant was consistent with the prior three years. And that transfer of, to wells, I think had a, we weren't aware that that was occurring. But as soon as we saw it, the first month, we started to raise the flag. I think that's really where we have to go with, with the process. Any other questions on the budget? The, the next thing is, we are working right now on our 2018 plan. There is a request for proposal out for guaranteed savings energy performance contract. It will include a comprehensive renovation and retrofit of the heating and cooling system up at the police headquarters. We're looking at additional work on LED street and exterior building lighting. We're looking at some enhanced building HVAC and cooling systems, including some at the fire headquarters building and other buildings. And then we're going to be looking at opportunities at water and wastewater pump stations. We actually never really addressed them in our audit process before, and the kinds of controls that we may be able to put on that to keep the water and wastewater costs in line. And the water and wastewater costs budgets not only include the plants, but they include all of these varying pump stations, and some can run significantly more just because of demand than others. And then we will also be looking in the spring at the electricity procurement, because the contract will be ending in June of eighteen, so it'll be a part of our, our program year planning as, as we move forward. We're, we've continued to look at enhanced energy management opportunities, demand response. There's actually a demand response program here. The utility provides some process for peak load management and time of use management. We did a proposal and had selected a contractor for off-site solar. That didn't go forward because of the, of the company, but we're, we're just not looking at the fundamentals. We're always trying to look at, is there opportunities to do more, including battery storage, which is now kind of the, the new thing that's out there, and ability to, as you can see, focus on demand and demand charges, capacity. So we're looking at ways to manage those increasing costs in the electricity procurement that'll allow us to, to keep a steady budget and to maintain our overall program profile as we move forward. We have taken advantage of state grants, as we said, the federal grants. We did get $65,000 from Delmarva through the Empower Maryland program when we did our 2009, 2010 program. Anytime we're in this next round, we'll be looking at making sure we maximize the capability, the rebates. It's about five percent of the total cost. And we are getting some monies on demand response. And as we look at opportunities for solar, there may be some new opportunities for the solar to move forward. So if you were to look at our pie chart here, we have our traditional energy management, energy procurement, what we've been doing to try to enhance that program, and distributed generation is the idea of solar and other opportunities. So we're really trying to continue to focus on ways to bring down our cost, stay within that sixty percent. But right now, our budget projections for eighteen are basically almost equal to where we've been for the last three, three years. And I think the only thing that I forewarn everybody is, it's a very tight budget. If we have any anomalies, we have to jump on those anomalies that first month and move forward. It's incumbent upon the department heads and staff to, to look at that as, as an opportunity. We're willing to come down and immediately look at the, at any of the facilities to try to provide the kind of advice that they need to make sure they stay within that budget. Any other questions?
What, I guess I just have a one question about solar. What's, what's holding us back from being able to do solar?
The, the biggest issue on solar right now is Delmarva. Their regulatory process, their approval process is, is basically, they're looking at these huge projects that could be developed, and they put them in the queue first, versus people who come in and say, I can build a project tomorrow, and they're not giving what they call interconnection approval as we move forward with that. The same thing is going on right now. They're looking at these big wind projects out in the ocean, and that's in front of the queue for what we would call commercially viable projects. So it's, it's more of a regulatory issue from what would be the easiest for us, and that would be an off-site solar project. We have looked at opportunities to do projects on our property, what we would call behind the meter, and we just don't have the space, the availability, the scale that we would need to, to do this. So that's really what the biggest holdup is at this point. I'm not saying that it, I think it could change in the next two years, and everybody has asked, where do I think, I said, let's put it off for two years, keep it on the radar. If we see something that's an opportunity, we need to jump on it immediately.
Any other questions? You got Ms. Clans?
Mr. Anderson, I don't know if it's outside your purview, but we recently got notice that the county landfill won't be accepting TVs and computers anymore for their recycling program. Do you know of any private recycling companies we can work with, or is that outside your scope?
No. I mean, I, I know of, you know, for other clients, we do comprehensive recycling programs. Yeah, I could get you information, including some of the computer companies like Hewlett Packard and so forth will take back. There's actually take-back programs now. But yes, I'll get that information for you.
So what, did we switch from what we were doing before? Because when I was on the recycling committee, there was a company that came in and picked all that up. So that, that ended? And then we were working with the county? Is that what happened?
I'm not entirely sure.
And I'm talking like 2010, 2011 through that, that time period?
I can get you the information. I don't know this much.
Nothing has changed in terms of policy in the last eighteen months. So if, if at some point, a relationship ended prior to that, it's entirely possible. But we can find out for it.
Yeah, 'cause I remember it was a, whenever that building would get full, a company would come and take them and then melt it down, and then whatever metals out of there. But a lot of times it was gold. We would get a check, the city would, so.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this?
I didn't agree with you. Didn't need to have my back to you.
Mr. Anderson, we thank you for coming down. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is going to be Ms. Pollak and his, and of course, Theo is here.
Hello, good evening.
This is an easy one, don't we? So thanks to all of you and the mayor and our delegation. We received a million dollars for the Main Street Master Project. That, of course, takes the form of a grant. As far as grants go, this has got to be the nicest one I've ever seen. They're giving us a million dollars. They're saying you can spend it on a broad array of things, and you don't have to spend it for seven years. So as far as grants go, this is, this is pretty great. However, we do still need council approval to exit or enter into the contract and to be able to expend those funds. Ms. Pollak can explain a bit more about the timeline, but we wouldn't be looking to expend those funds this fiscal year. FY nineteen, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And we do need to get Board of Public Works approval, but again, that wouldn't be until late FY eighteen, mid FY eighteen at the earliest. And I'll let Ms. Pollak take over.
Because I'll be talking about Main Street funding a little bit later in the agenda, I want to explain, so this grant is for the next phase of Main Street Master Plan. We can't use it for the current phase. We had applied for this money while the current phase was already going on, and the Maryland Board of Public Works has to approve any contracts that we want to use this grant for. So it's really for the, the next phase. We also had shown this current phase as part of our participation and our match for this type of grant. So it, it showed that the city really had a commitment to this project, and we've put a lot of money forward already. You'll see in the language, we do have a match, and so as we spend money in the next phase, as we spend it, we can get reimbursed in kind. So it's a million-dollar grant. Once we spend a million, we'll have gotten reimbursement estate for that million. But as, as Theo noted, this was written very broadly, which is very good for us. It's very helpful. It essentially says we can use it on Main Street, streetscapes, water, sewer, storm drain systems, and for the fiber optic cable that we are putting in. So it, it really will cover any number of items in the next phase of the streetscape. So we're looking to start that project in the fall of next year, the fall of 2018, which would put us in fiscal year nineteen. So that's when we would expect to be starting to draw on this grant. And, and we have, as Theo said, we have until 2024 to fully utilize it. We would like to be done with this well in advance of that. But we have to have BPW authorization by June first, 2019. So again, we hope to be a year ahead of that to get their approval to, to use this money.
I don't have any questions. I, I don't have any questions. I'm going to hold Theo up from filling this out and getting it in as quick as possible. Jack, you have any questions?
Just one quick one. Choice of vendor is still ours, correct?
Oh, yes, yes. Choice of vendor is ours. We have to prove to the state that we followed public procurement procedures. We'll give them our advertising information, as well as our recommendation of award, why we awarded to a vendor. But yeah, we, we follow our normal procedures and they come in and review it afterwards, similar to what we did on the wastewater treatment plant.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Should we have consensus and move forward?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. The, in preparation for our next Eastern Shore delegation legislative lunch that we'll do this fall, like we did last year, the first one at the zoo, just be thinking about legislative prior, in terms of the context of legislative priorities, that our hope for our top priority would be to come back and say, you said you were with us, continue to stay with us. And in conversations with the governor's office, that's exactly what they're expecting us to, to do. So they're expecting a continued commitment to downtown Salisbury, so we should be prepared for that conversation in September when we have lunch with the Eastern Shore delegation. And any conversations you have with members of the Eastern Shore delegation, remind them that, you know, our number one priority is keep bringing money to Salisbury.
I got that, and I got a couple of other things on my list, too.
And there are, there are other things, absolutely.
All right. So we have consensus? So, thank you.
Thank you.
Put this on the next.
I just want to say, it says you can't buy ping pong tables with this money. I just wanted to throw that out there. It specifically says that in the regulation that you can't buy ping pong tables, so just wanted to share that. Thank you.
I just think that's interesting. 'Cause I mean, someone probably did buy ping pong tables with state money.
We were going to do a permanent ping pong tournament. It'd make sense, but I don't think that's going to happen. All right. Next item on the agenda is the Riverside Drive Circle Design.
Okay, I'd like to invite a couple other folks up. Here with me today to discuss the Riverside Circle Design is Chris Klassing is Salisbury's project engineer who's managing this project. And then also with us is Seth Darlington from Wallace Montgomery. And Wallace Montgomery recently completed a draft feasibility study for a circle on Riverside Drive. We have boards on the side of the room. The full report is also in the council package. And Seth is going to go through the feasibility study, and he would like for you to ask questions at any time during this report so that we can make it more interactive, but we'll, we'll try to hit some of the highlights and, and our recommendations.
What's the best way to do this, the surveys?
That's fine. Why don't we put that one up? Yeah, that's fine.
And there, we do have a resident that has, will at some point have some questions and has something he provided with this. So I'll let you start, and then once we have some questions, there'll be a point I'll, I'll have this individual come up and ask some questions, make some comments.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I mean, as I go through this, it'd be best to just ask as we go, so that's fine. So again, thank you, Amanda. My name is Seth Darlington. I'm with Wallace Montgomery. We're a civil engineering design firm, excuse me, in Baltimore, Maryland. We do work throughout the state and in the region on transportation facilities. So we were brought on to do a feasibility and a concept development study for this intersection, and with, with a particular focus on a roundabout, a circle design. So to start off the job, we, we looked at the intersection, we did a traffic study. We, we did full day counts of traffic. We spoke with State Highway Association Administration to discuss the impacts to the Maryland, sorry, US fifty business intersection. This intersection is Mill Street, Carroll, West Carroll Street, Riverside Drive. This is three intersections south of the US Business Fifty intersection, so it does have some system impacts along that corridor as well. So from the traffic study that we did, which we, we looked at traffic counts at this intersection and, and then built a traffic model for the system, which includes this intersection and the three, sorry, two intersections north of it, to understand the level of service, the queue lengths of that intersection in the, in the existing condition. And found, just to start off in that place, that this intersection is operating at a, an overall level of service of B, which is, is a measure of delay at the intersection. Its level of service is a, is a way that we can measure delay A through F. F is in failing intersection with delays over ninety seconds, I believe. And B is a, is a pretty standard well-operating intersection. Y'all might have driven this intersection and noticed that you are stuck at a traffic light for a certain amount of time during peak hours, and that may seem like a long time for the area. But in general, level of service B is, is a fairly good operating system. So from there, we, we looked at what the intersection would operate at in an interim future year and an ultimate future year, it's twenty years down the road. And we took into account local development as well as regional development. We grew the existing traffic numbers one percent overall, and then adjusted those as well for the local developments in the area that we, we understand that may happen, including some at the Marina area and in the library parking lot. And from that, we were able to analyze the level of service and queue lengths and delays for this intersection overall. In the existing condition, as I said before, the overall level of service is C at the existing condition, and in the future years, it remains a C. Although there are some changes to each individual approach, does, the level of service does get slightly worse. So, you know, we're, we are predicting the level of service to remain essentially the same over the, over the future years.
Could you clarify for me? Because I think before you said, I, I thought I heard that it's functioning at a B, and I just heard.
I'm sorry, yes. In the existing condition, I'm sorry, I misspoke. In the existing condition, it functions as a, as a B. In the future years, twenty twenty-six and twenty thirty-six, the level of services would be expected to be a C.
And you said twenty twenty-six, it'll degrade to a C?
Yes.
So what would residents be experiencing when it's at a C?
Slightly longer delays. The, and, and that is an average delay over the entire intersection. And, you know, there are different changes for each approach. You know, for example, the eastbound approach on Riverside goes from a, a level of service D in the existing condition to an E. And that is a measure of delay, which is, let me tell you, it's very minimal. It's a delay change of fifty-four seconds to fifty-nine seconds. And then in the twenty thirty-six, I'm just using this one as an example, the delay would be sixty-nine seconds, and that's still a level of service E. It's just a, level of service is a good way to measure in general terms.
What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page twelve.
Thank you.
So from there, we, we understood what the existing conditions are and the future year conditions, what we would expect them to be if we did nothing at this intersection. We looked at, from there, how to improve this intersection to, to allow for a traffic circle, and then also to compare that improvement to a, a, the same intersection with an optimized signal. We did notice during, I should step, step back a little bit. We did notice that during our traffic study of the existing conditions, that there, there could be some improvements to lane use at the intersection, and that really has to do with drivers not utilizing the lanes to their fullest capacity. There are two lanes of, of traffic approaching from Riverside Drive towards Mill Street that aren't fully utilized. So that is an issue with driver behavior, and it's something that can be improved through some low-cost solutions like signage and signal timings, but you may never actually see that driver behavior change that much. It's more difficult to, to modify that, especially if people are used to the intersection as it is.
What specifically, as you say, some lower-cost modifications, what, indeed, any details on specifically what you would do?
Yeah, so signage and, and approach signage, really, the issue is, you know, for the, for the example I was using, the Riverside Drive, there's two lanes that people are mostly using the left lane, I believe, and placing some approach signage to, to say, use two lanes, you know, different signage to allow people to be in the correct lane for the next signal forward, which may be an issue, the issue here. But again, that's something that, that you can try, but it may not actually change the driver behavior that much. So you may always have underutilized lanes, lane capacity. But I should say, so we then, we looked at two traffic circle options and then also one optimized traditional intersection option. And that traditional intersection option assumes that the lanes were utilized appropriately in the most efficient way, and changed the signal timings slightly to allow for better So on page fifteen of the report, we, we have the results of that, that traditional improvement. The table there has existing optimized and twenty thirty-six optimized levels, level of service. And for the existing, we, we think we can improve the level of service to a B, C, sorry, the level of service optimized would be B, C, and twenty-six, twenty thirty-six would also be B and C. So a slight improvement overall, but in general, that's pretty much very similar operations.
Can I ask a question? Is this, are you talking about doing a roundabout some, in this area?
Yes. I haven't gotten to that portion yet, but yes, that's the...
And you've done a study?
Yes.
So he's, just a reminder, he's presenting that tonight? He's presenting the study tonight?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, and it's also a reminder, he's presenting it for information purposes, not for decision tonight? Because it's already funded and already occurring, the, what he's looking for is council input, and the reason why we brought it to council is because it's a, it's a big project, so we'd love to get some input from the council on the, the two different options that are available. But according to the downtown master plan that was adopted in December twenty fifteen, that intersection will become a circle, and it was in the CIP adopted the last two years and budgeted this year. So it's, it's not a decision point, but it is something that input from council is still desired by the engineering firm that's been hired to design and execute the project. So the decision point on this was back in two thousand fifteen, when the intersection was decided to be changed to a circle. So this is just a discussion on the various options, and they've been hired to create those options for the intersection.
Well, can I ask another question? Will there be, you said signage?
Yes.
Will there be signals? Because that's a busy, yes, the intersection is very busy.
Well, let me move on to, to discussing the two build options that we came up with. You know, everything that I've been stating so far has to do with, you know, that we've laid the groundwork for this study. And then from there, we took a look at what it would take to, to put reasonable roundabouts at this intersection. And, and what we have come up with is two separate options. One of them is a slightly smaller roundabout option, and one of them is a slightly larger roundabout option. We, during our study, we looked at a, at a much smaller roundabout option and a much larger roundabout option, and deemed both of those not to be feasible for the area. The larger option, we really thought that the, the right-of-way impacts would be too great. The changes to the Mill Street Bridge would be much more expensive than, than needed. And, and the, the smaller option that we looked at would not operate at a, at a satisfactory level at all. So the two options that we have are a hundred-and-twenty-foot diameter roundabout, and the larger one that we have is a hundred-and-fifty-foot diameter roundabout. They're very similar in size in general. They do operate slightly differently. And this would not be a signalized intersection. There would be a new approach signage. It would be a change in how people drive the area, which would take some getting used And the maps that we have here show both of those options. And, you know, at this point, we haven't chosen which option that we're going to go with, and we are still in the mode of, of getting input and revising these if we need to.
We prefer this one-hundred-and-twenty-foot option, and you'll see why when we look at both of them. The one-hundred-and-fifty-foot diameter roundabout requires us to close Camden Avenue, and we think that would be a very significant and, and a challenge in the neighborhood. So this one-hundred-and-twenty-foot design is, is currently our preferred. Again, we wanted some feedback, but it keeps the operation the most similar to what there is now, so you can still go one way on Camden Avenue from this intersection.
What was the thought behind closing Camden Avenue?
Yeah, let's talk about that. So with roundabout design, the, you're really looking at the conflict points where, where traffic is entering the circle and where traffic is leaving the circle. And, and with roundabouts, you're, you're able to reduce those conflict points and, and reduce the possible severity of crashes to, by minimizing those conflicts. So with the larger traffic circle that we have, in order to accommodate the, the slip lane from Riverside Drive to West Carroll Street, we really thought that having... that, uh, having, um, exiting traffic from the circle onto Camden Ave, crossing three lanes of entering traffic would be an unsafe situation. Um, and, um, by closing Camden Ave, it, it would improve the operation of the circle, um, but it does, uh, shift that traffic to, um, West Carroll or Riverside Drive, uh, and, and have them detour around that area.
So are you saying that the traffic on, um, Camden will be restricted to one way?
So where it currently is now, it would continue to be one way, just in that first block, yes.
Right. So with the larger, uh, sorry, with the smaller, um, roundabout, we were able to, uh, maintain, um, Camden Ave, uh, being open, um, uh, mostly because it's, it's only crossing two lanes of entering traffic. Um, you know, the way, uh, roundabouts should operate is that, uh, entering traffic, um, should, um, yield to the traffic within the circle. So the traffic within the circle, uh, has a right-of-way, and they travel through, um, the intersection. In that location, um, the key there is, um, to, uh, induce the, in, uh, incoming traffic from Riverside Drive to basically stop for any traffic that comes, that's coming through the circle, to allow them either to turn right onto Camden Ave or keep going through towards West Carroll. Um, so these, uh, two intersections, um, are very similar in operations. Um, the size is, is different, and, uh, you know, the larger one would, would require some more, uh, right-of-way, uh, purchasing. Um, but they are, they're both, um, reasonable, uh, amounts of, of right-of-way. They're not, uh, they're not taking any buildings, they wouldn't, um, close any businesses. Um, and, and, um, uh, as Amanda was saying, that the, um, the new, uh, development in this area here wouldn't be greatly impacted as well.
That's really the area where we have the most, um, impact to private property, where we would need to procure some right-of-way, is on the property of five hundred Riverside Drive, so that's something we'll be working on and looking into. Um, but fortunately, with their preliminary plans, that'll be going to Planning Commission this week, um, that wouldn't impact their parking or their building, it's in the landscape area.
Five hundred Riverside Drive, that's the corner store, right there?
Uh, no, I'm sorry, the, the vacant property towards the river, uh, that has a development proposal.
So, which, I'm sorry, and can I just add real quick, about five hundred Riverside, which by the way is on the Planning Commission agenda, um, Thursday, and if you have questions, uh, Mr. Lennox can probably, um, add information if you have questions about that property.
Well, I was just wondering about the, the, the corner store.
Sure, so, uh, that one, actually, the, the sidewalk location stays relatively the same as what it is now. So, um, we'll check the right-of-way maps to see exactly where that line falls, but their, their parking lot and their sidewalk will, will pretty much stay the same. So there, there may be a little bit of impact where we need to secure some land there, but it would be between the sidewalk and the road.
Yeah, I guess my question about five hundred Riverside Drive is, um, where, where are you looking to have the, the curb cut?
For...
Going to that property, would that be further?
It's further to the west, so we had tried to keep their...
Is that this, this property?
Yes, mm-hmm. We had tried to keep their, um, entrance as far west as possible. Um, it maybe could slide, based on their preliminary plans, it could possibly slide a little bit further to the west, but you can see from the aerial, there's an existing sort of right-in entrance that's kind of right near the circle. Um, we, we've recommended against that for the development because that, really, in both this scenario and in current conditions, you could really only access that if you were coming off of Mill Street making a right turn. So it's not, um, not a good way to access that, and we feel like even now, under current scenarios without the circle, people may, coming from Carroll Street, try to, try to cut over and, and get to that entrance where it really isn't intended to, um, receive anything but a right-in. So we'd be recommending doing away with that entrance and having their full turning, so they'd be able to make rights-in, lefts-in, left-out, et cetera, um, further west on that property.
Are you, 'cause I know the other thing that happens with the corner store, that's, that's the one people cut through their parking lot to...
They do, they do, yeah.
If it's jammed up. I guess my, my biggest question, and I think, uh, Councilman Irahan had, uh, similar concern, was the issue during rush hour in the morning, uh, with the light. So with that, there's gonna have to be some change to the timing on the lights, to some effect. Um, what's, what's the recommend, because I know we also have to work with State Highway Administration on that, because they control those lights.
And the contractor, and he can speak to this, I mean, they've, they've been working with State Highway, and just briefly to put it on the, uh, to put it on the radar of, uh, State Highway Administrator Slater, um, we talked to him, met with him, and, you know, they, they have just assured us that everything that they do in terms of timing will be intended to work with whatever we decide. So whatever Salisbury does, they will ensure that the Mill Street, Mill and Main, and then the, uh, Mill and Fifty, or Mill and Fifty intersections are timed to support, um, that intersection.
We had met with State Highway early in the study phase to get their preliminary questions and what they want us to look at. Um, after, we wanted to present to you first, and then we'll go back to State Highway and really start talking to them in more detail about changing the, the light timing.
Has a decision been made? Are you, are we going with a smaller one or are we going with a larger?
Um, that's, that's what we're strongly leaning towards, based on, uh, the impacts to Camden Avenue in particular and the right-of-way, but a-again, we wanted to get feedback first. Um, if you notice, the, the report doesn't have a recommendation section because we were, uh, having these discussions, and then, so I, I guess I'll hit on our, our next steps is, we wanted to meet with you, then we'll meet with State Highway, and then Wallace Montgomery will finalize the study. So then we will have final recommendations, the study will be complete. Then we'll start initiating the design and permitting process, um, before we move to construction, so...
You know, I've actually seen these done in, in residential communities, but I've never seen them done in a business somewhat community, so I'm gonna be amazed to see how this works.
Um, we have, uh, one, a resident that, uh...
I have a question first here, if I could.
Okay, sorry.
Um, the study, if I remember correctly, was done in March?
Uh, when did we start?
Behind choosing that time of the year?
Oh, the traffic study?
Yeah.
Oh, got it. Um, so, uh, it was, uh, timing with when we started this project, as well as making sure that we, um, uh, we, we have the, the sort of the worst-case, uh, traffic situation where the school is in session, um, that's the big thing. Um, and, um, and, yeah, so that's, that's really the, the basis of the timing of this, of the traffic study.
We made sure that both public schools and Saint Francis were in session. We didn't want to fall on a holiday from either, so we could get realistic traffic numbers.
All right, now, I assume, well, I know that the bypass has taken some of these fifty traffic, but during the summer, there's still quite good traffic goes down there. Uh, do you think that that would be significant enough to change anything?
Um, it may change, uh, the issue at, uh, Business Fifty, at that intersection with Mill Street, um, but I don't see that changing this intersection. Um, no.
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll take a moment here, and I'll have, uh, Mr. Henry Dibburn, please, if you wanna come up to the podium, and I'll pass out your comments.
Um, my name is Henry Dibburn. I, uh, am a resident of Salisbury. I moved here in nineteen eighty-eight and, uh, live on McBride Circle, which is about a mile south of, along Riverside Drive, south of the intersection. So I've had quite a number of opportunities, particularly since I retired in two thousand and four, to observe the conditions of that intersection, and, uh, I, uh, also have a fairly decent understanding of traffic circles and how they work. Um, I don't wanna sound confrontational, but I'm a little disappointed to hear that the decision has already been made, that there will be a traffic circle. Um, I had tried on a number of different occasions in past years to offer, uh, an observation about these and, uh, was of the understanding that there would be time later. Uh, what the, my major concern about this is that, uh, the study doesn't adequately identify one of the major contributing factors to congestion in that intersection, and that is, uh, drivers entering that intersection from Carroll Street when there's no opportunity to pass completely through the intersection. People in that right-hand turn lane, when they get that green arrow, will continue to fill up all the way from, uh, West Main Street back. A large percentage of those cars, particularly in the heavy traffic day, times, wanna make a left onto West Main, and, uh, so they clog the left turn lane, they clog the left through lane, and then they nose in and block the right lane on Mill Street going north. Um, and so it just clogs things up to the point where, uh, when the signal turns green to give, uh, people from Riverside Drive an opportunity to proceed in a northbound direction, there's no place to go because traffic is across there. I tried to, I apologize for taking the liberty of marking up, uh, one of, uh, W and B's, uh, diagrams from the study, but I'm trying to show you there that when this traffic from Carroll Street, uh, gets in there and cuts off traffic coming up Riverside, you can't get through. And, um, so, that has been a problem with the existing conditions. Now, I've seen traffic circles work very, very well. The one down in Fruitland, for instance, works very nicely. And the reason it works so nicely is there's a way for traffic to exit the circle. There's egress from the circle in every direction, so that people can enter the circle at a reasonable pace and leave it. But our problem here at Riverside and Carroll and Mill and Camden is that you have that traffic light at Mill Street, and when you get the very heavy traffic backing up on, all the way back from the Mills, uh, the Main Street light on Mill Street, there's no place for traffic in a circle to discharge to the north. And my, that, once that light changes, in the current situation, once that light changes, traffic finally gets out of that blocking position and into their left-hand turn lane. But if you have a traffic circle there and people aren't controlled by a light, they'll continue from Riverside and from Carroll Street until they get that side of the circle clogged, and then traffic coming southbound on Mill Street is blocked, it can't go anywhere. So if there isn't a way to solve that problem of getting a way for traffic to leave in a northbound direction, uh, I feel that we're gonna find that, uh, at peak traffic flow times, uh, which, uh, I don't, I've, I've seen it from like about two-thirty on till, uh, about five-thirty or so, it's just outrageous and it's frustrating to everybody, but, uh, while I think a traffic circle would work very nicely in the other times of the day when the flow is minimal, uh, I just, I'm scared that it's not gonna work very well, and then we're committed to something that i-is just a total blockage, it's, it'll, it'll clog, uh, fire and ambulance traffic, uh, and everything else trying to get to our part of town. Uh, I think, uh, we could help, uh, improve, uh, safety concerns for pedestrians and, and even cyclists by utilizing some of the, uh, uh, better crosswalk markings, uh, on Riverside, Camden and Carroll, and maybe even consider, uh, putting some flashers in like we have down at, uh, uh, near the university on, uh, Camden and, uh, West College to alert, uh, vehicles when a pedestrian's attempting to make a cross there. Pedestrian traffic is not particularly heavy most times of the day there, so it's, uh, I see a greater problem, people trying to get across at Mill and West Main than, than there in particular. But, um, I hope, uh, if, if we're, I don't know what kind, what, I have no recollection of what the day was like on March first when the traffic study was done, but, uh, I would encourage people to take a good, hard look at what happens, uh, in the late a-, mid-to-late afternoon, uh, uh, on weekdays in particular. It's, uh, it's, uh, I try to avoid that intersection from about noon time, one to six, but, uh, it's, uh, driver education, which is a tough sell, too. If anybody had any questions for me?
No. Thank you for your comments, we, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the opportunity.
And I, he does raise a couple of good points there, you know, is that, is that something where we come down during those times with the lights and, you know?
Yeah, yes, I mean, um, this, uh, these three intersections do operate like a system, uh, so they are very much, uh, influenced by each other. Um, you know, as he was saying, if, uh, one intersection fails, it will most likely push back into the next intersection down the road. Um, but I would say it, it doesn't necessarily mean that this intersection is the cause of that failure. Um, I think this can operate, uh, openly and freely in other directions, uh, even if, um, the next intersection down the way is, has failed and the, and the traffic has backed up.
Well, I think that's the issue. You got two lights really close together, there's not a lot of space, and...
Right.
You got a lot of people trying to quickly cut over to either where they, you know, either to the light to turn left or over to turn right, you know, and I think that's, you know, where we run into trouble, and, uh, and, you know, the, the other concern is that's Station Sixteen's main route to get to the Camden neighborhood whenever there's a call for service. So, and, and if everything's blocked up and jammed up, you know, it's, that's, that's the, the other issue, so...
Right.
And that's, and that's exactly why...
Kind of like leaves us with one big question mark, you know, I mean, that's the...
Not, not really, um, because that's already been asked and answered by S H A, and really that was the critical piece, is, um, the first step of this process was to figure out whether or not State Highway was going to be supportive.
Yeah.
Um, because on, as has been experienced in past issues, projects and administrations, um, the question has been asked, you know, we would like to do X, and State Highway says, well, that conflicts with what we wanna do, um, or what we're willing to do. They took a very different approach here. Um, the leadership, the administrator, uh, and, and the, the MDOT secretary have all been incredibly supportive, and this was even one of the, um, projects, because it's been in the pipeline for so many years now, this is one of the projects that they considered investing in. Um, you know, so they, they've been very supportive and, in terms of enabling this so long as, you know, it works from a functional standpoint. And what I think the study, you know, if you read the study, I think what it shows is that it, it can't get worse than it is. You know, it can't, it, it will with time, but it can't get worse in terms of its functionality. Um, you know, those times, at those times of day, this is not a great intersection.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and really from the school, uh, traffic, that seems to be... You know, and really from the school traffic, that seems to be the, I mean, rush hour commuting, but from the school traffic, that seems to be the, the biggest cause of issues in this intersection.
And then also, you know, I would say even if we made this intersection perfectly operating free-flow traffic, you're still gonna have the issue of the next, the next intersections.
And then a couple of other things. Conversations have been started with Tim Curriton at Rise Up in terms of potential redevelopment and, because there's an additional influencer on that area, especially in the mornings. And that's the, the traffic that sits out from Rise Up into the travel lanes on Riverside Drive, which are, is a major safety hazard. And then there's a, there's another conversation that we've got to have and which has influences to some extent. But Mr. DeVern just brought this up to an even, which I think is, is critical, which is the pedestrian movements in that area. And remembering that the Riverside, excuse me, the Riverwalk Master Plan implementation includes, and the Urban Greenway, and the Bike Ways Master Plan all influence the connectivity there, including the Camden Street pedestrian bridge, the bike lanes, or the bikeway at Carroll Street, and the Riverwalk improvements at Carroll Street, all of which, many of which are happening in the next 12 to 16 months. So there's some major pedestrian influencers in terms of improving pedestrian flow right there. And I think the idea of flashers and other, I mean, it will be the major crossing point that, at that point, the major crossing point for pedestrians from, to and from Camden and downtown. And with the Camden Street pedestrian bridge, it has the potential to actually be safe and usable. But that really depends on how you get people through that intersection, as he brought up. Which, when this actually goes to engineering, is something that we're gonna have to think long and hard about.
All right, well, thank you for the update. Jack, do you have any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pollock is still here.
One more item.
This is the Main Street Master Plan update and contingency.
Okay. So I'm, I'm here today primarily to talk about a budget amendment for Main Street Master Plan to add to contingency. I want to talk a little bit about where we are with the project and, and why we're recommending this source of funding. Essentially, as you know, we had hit soil contamination in the first block. It adds to our costs in a couple of different ways. We have to haul in clean soil, we have to dispose of dirty soil, and then we have to treat the groundwater. So we're working with the state on all of those, those different items. And what we've done to date so far with change orders has taken care of the first block. But it's left us with very little contingency going forward, and we still have two more blocks to build and, and the top side. So just from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, we need to have some contingency available in accounts. As far as soil contamination goes, we're continuing to investigate down the block. When we first found the soil contamination in the first block, we did a couple of test pits in the next two blocks. Last week, we decided to do 10 more, more invasive test pits and test the groundwater conditions. So we'll have feedback from that tomorrow, essentially. But that'll impact really how much of this money we're going to need in the future blocks for soil issues. So far, the way the state views our soil contamination is really from two different arms of M D E, the soil component and the groundwater component. So from the, from the aspect of the soils, we were approved to start hauling away anything that's clean as clean fill and to reuse it as we need to when it's clean. And we do tests in the field and we test every five bucket loads that go into a dump truck. So we're constantly testing what we're doing. So we're, we're in a good place there. Now, groundwater is a little bit different story. When we found the contamination, the way the groundwater program at M D E views it is this is a contaminated groundwater site, meaning the entire project, the full site. So even though after we moved away from Route 13, really the contamination was in like the first 50 feet there off of Route 13, we were still treating that as if it was contaminated groundwater. So right now, we're still treating it as if there's contaminated groundwater. So that's probably, that's part of why we did the more invasive testing last week. We're really trying to get a handle on, is there going to be any other contaminated groundwater that we have to treat? And if so, where exactly? And how much can we contain it and handle that as its own unit and treat it as efficiently as possible? So I don't have all those answers yet, but we are working towards that. We, we'd had some preliminary discussions with M D E to try to release us from the groundwater requirements like we got released from the soil once we were hitting clean soil, and they, they need to see this testing. So once we have all the results that were started last week, we'll know better where we stand. So it, it still brings us to the fact that it's, it's prudent for us to do a budget amendment to have some contingency. I'll note that if we don't spend it this phase, we'd have it for the next phase going forward. We try to keep the, the topic broad enough that it's for Main Street. So I, I talked to Mr. Corddry, the Finance Director, when we decided that we wanted to try to pursue another budget amendment and talked to him about some of the options to do so. And in, in trying to avoid surplus, we started looking at what were the other pots of money that we have available to us to use surplus as a last option. And you may recall, last year, we did a budget amendment when we first hit the soil contamination, and that was from a bond pool. So we had a project that had just been completed. It was in the same bond pool as Main Street, and so we had transferred just over $500,000 last year from bond reallocation. So I don't have any really easy bond reallocation left to do. We, we hit that one first. So in talking to Mr. Corddry, probably our next most available pot of money is the litigation proceeds from the, from the plant upgrade a few years ago. So I, I want to give you a little bit of an idea on what exactly we have there, because we, we were just talking about these last week at, at the legislative meeting for the water and sewer operating transfer. So with the litigation proceeds, it's essentially an unrestricted cash account. We, we weren't, it wasn't identified from the litigation exactly what we had to spend it on, so we had the ability to decide. When we received the funds, we had allocated it towards four different projects. The Parkside Lift Station upgrade, which is complete, that one's done. Hampshire Road Lift Station project, which is about to go out for bid. The Fitzwater Pump Station project, which is, you know, we had to do some redesign to move it away from the Marina property. And then Paleo Well Number Three, which is also approaching going out for bid. So all four of those projects had some portion of the project allocated from litigation proceeds. But with that, we still had held contingency, you know, over a million dollars held after those allocations, just, just in case for, for this type of thing. As you know, last week, you had first reading of an ordinance to change the way some of Hampshire and Fitzwater's money was allocated and use some sewer capacity fee money and take the rest out of litigation proceeds. It swapped the way those allocations were done. So all in all, we're putting back some money from Hampshire and Fitzwater into the litigation proceeds, but then transferring 1.6 million to water and sewer operating. So again, talking with Mr. Cordry, what we have left after doing all of that, if that passes second reading, would be just under $800,000, so right around $794,000. So that's what we would have left in the cash account for litigation proceeds. So we're looking to do an amendment for $600,000, of which $100,000 would be additional costs for the Inspection Construction Administration, $500,000 being allocated to the construction account. So if, if this passes through, we would be left with just under $200,000 left in the litigation proceeds for other contingencies, about $194,000 left. So it begs the question, and Councilman Ierton had, had alluded to this at the last meeting, what do I need for the treatment plant? What, what am I going to be coming for as, as far as that goes? So just to give you the big picture of how all these tie together, with the wastewater treatment plant, as you know, we have grants and loans. It's a $50 million project, and the state through the grants and loans gives us 5% for contingency. Now, they review all the change orders, just like you do, but 5% of the project was about $2.5 million. To date, our change orders total $325,000, which was, it's at 0.65% right now. So we still have 2.1, almost 2.2 million dollars left for contingency at the wastewater plant. So I have that. And then we do also have an FY13 bond remaining also for treatment plant contingency. So we, we do feel like we have adequate money there. I don't want to jinx ourselves since the project's not done, but it, we're not as close on limits as we are on Main Street right now. So, so that's why we're targeting the litigation proceeds is it was un earmarked money, unrestricted, and it, it keeps us from dipping into surplus. We're, we're trying to go to any other source first before we have to hit surplus.
Amanda?
Yes.
And can I just add? Would, would you address what happens to unused contingency funds as well?
Sure.
So if, if these funds don't end up being necessary?
Yeah, so, so right now, because we, we have another phase close on the horizon, it would be used for that next phase, the West Main Street and North Division Street phase. If we get to the end of that project and there's unused money, then that would go back to surplus, or, or it would, again, in a couple of years, would be back in front of you, transferring it to another project. So this is in capital project accounts. We, we can't move it without your approval, so it would stay allocated towards Main Street until Main Street is completely done, and then we could decide what to do with anything that's remaining.
Any questions? Jack, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I want to be clear. The money, the money that we're talking about, we don't need it now, correct?
I, I'm not ready to hit you with another change order right this minute, no. I'll, I'll know a lot more when we start getting the test results. And so that, I, I should back up and say, the preliminary tests that we did a few months ago that were less invasive all came back with positive results for us, that it, it looks like we should be clearing out of contamination. As I said, we're doing more invasive testing in specific to the groundwater. So at, at this point, I don't have it earmarked for anything. We have had some significant hauling costs, so it's, there's a potential that, that we will have some additional hauling costs. But, but I, I'm not asking for $500,000, and I know I'm about to spend it all, but the potential does exist.
That's, that's what, that's what I'm concerned with. There's no difference. If we need it, we can, we can always do the amendment, correct?
We could. It's more of a timing issue. We, we right now have just over $100,000 left in the Main Street project account that's unallocated. So if we do find that we need it and, and have to do a change order, then you're adding this entire process on the front end of a change order. So it just adds that much more time. So the reason we're doing it out in front now is because then if a change order does arise, we're not in a situation where we have to tell the contractor to, to stop work until we have money in an account and then do a change order. So we're, we're just trying to be ahead of that to keep the project moving.
But the, the, the real driver of that is the information we're supposed to be getting tomorrow, right?
It is. That's the primary driver. Again, we, yeah, we've kind of lost track of the fact that in any construction job, there's always little things that come up, like, you know, a conflict with, with an existing pipe. So it would also help cover just those unforeseen type conflicts. But the main driver is the, is the soils.
I was gonna say, and one of the drivers for wanting a robust enough contingency rather than simply just if we run into crisis, coming for a budget amendment, is that, you know, timing and keeping the project moving, knowing that we have 200,000 visitors coming in September 2018. You know, we, we need to make sure that this project is done and, you know, cleaned up, along with every other capital project in the Corps for their arrival.
Any other questions?
One, one more. Have we tested? Why were we testing? Did we go on and, and test all the way up?
We did up to Division Street. We, we're testing right now in the scope that is under this contractor. Before we put the next phase out to bid, we will do testing in the next phase. But since that's out of, out of their realm, we, we didn't have them go any, any further beyond Division Street.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So do we have consensus to move forward?
Yes.
Jack, you, you good?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'll put this on the next legislative session.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item up is the ordinance number 2429 fences. So we have some changes that have been made. Who's coming up to this? Is this just us, or?
At this point, I think just council discussion.
Okay.
Unless you want additional staff input.
So they've made, we've made some changes as far as, just based on input from the public and appreciate the mayor being flexible on this. As it's coming with the chain link fencing, it's gonna read under Section 8. Chain link fencing is permitted in parallel with the front building facade and along all side and rear property lines in all residential districts, including planned development districts, planned residential districts, and wherever the primary use is residential. And under Section I, we've added chain link fencing. Chicken wire or hog wire fencing shall be prohibited forward of the front building facade in all residential districts, including planned development districts and planned residential districts and wherever the primary use is residential. Fences inset from the property line surrounding gardens, chicken coops, dog kennels, or other enclosures may be constructed with chicken wire, hog fencing, or chain link fencing. And then in J, we, fences shall not be constructed with scrap lumber, wood pallets, garage doors, sheet metal, tarps, or other scrap metal. And then under K, we've got in zoning districts where chain link fences are permitted, such fencing shall be installed with vinyl coating or approved screening slats. Does anybody have any questions about any of these changes? Are we, are we okay with these? Do we want to, is there anything else you would like to change to this or see something else? We can discuss that now.
I'm, I'm reading, I've read it earlier. So you're prohibiting chain link fence from residential neighborhood?
No, we're in the front, correct.
In the front.
Yeah, in the front yard. That's what this is saying, yes.
I think the, the edits that council, based on the latest changes, that's not what it says. Says that it is permitted in the front, vinyl coated or with slats, though, so long as it's vinyl coated or with slats, though.
So it's gotta be coated, not the, the chain link?
Vinyl coated, chain link, but vinyl coated or with slats. But I think there has been multiple comments sent to council as well as sent to the administration that, you know, there's a desire for other options still with respect to chain link, and the ability to paint it, the ability to coat it with, you know, an off-the-shelf product rather than, you know, so there, there's a variety of comments that have been made to that effect, rather than requiring the vinyl coating or the slating. I don't know what the industry term is.
Screening slats.
Screening, screening slats.
So in that, in that part, would it be, I mean, would it be okay to say installed with vinyl coating or painted with, I don't know how, how we would word that?
With proper.
I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think the administration has an opinion on that. I think that's, you know, something that council can sort out.
So we could write a line that says, like, comma after vinyl coating with appropriate, or I don't know how to use the word appropriate when we get. Vinyl coating, paint?
But in I, it's saying chain link fencing is prohibited.
Prohibited forward of the front building facade.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's where I think the chain needs to come, because if you're saying it's prohibited, then whether it's coated or not, it's prohibited. then whether it's coated or not, it's prohibited.
Well, in, but K allows the exception where it's permitted if it's got vinyl coating and then we could add if it's, if it's painted.
In zoning districts where chain link fences are permitted, such as fences shall be installed with vinyl coating or the necessary, I guess I can't, I don't even know whether it would be cool code enforced paintings or whatever, because there is special paints that you use on that fence, on that fencing to give it that, that, the gloss and give it that protection because without it, you just have that blah look. But I'm just saying here saying it's, it's prohibited. But then in K, you go down and say in zoning districts where chain links are permitted.
And that's where it's allowing that exception. Or if it is up there, if you do put it up there, it needs to have paint design for.
It's either or. It's either allowed or it's not allowed, is what I'm saying. If you read I and then read K, either it's allowed or it's not allowed.
As written, I think the councilwoman is correct.
Yeah, I think she did.
Prohibit chain link fencing in front of the front of the structure. Because the reference to fences, other zoning districts where they are permitted, you know.
You have stipulations.
You know, at least in any residential district, they would not be permitted by section I of the front of the front building lot unless they previously existed. So, and then one other comment I have is the under J, I think we need to have a more comprehensive list of things that you probably wouldn't want to do, that we could add to that in consultation. For example, that this would allow you to put up a new plywood fence, like a construction fence you see in the city, and it wouldn't prohibit that. So we need to be careful and probably expand that because nobody wants to see salt treated plywood thrown up around somebody's yard.
Mr. Lennox, do you want to, do you have any input on this? Come on up.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, thank you.
Jack, we called in Jack Lennox from the bullpen, just so you're aware.
Thank you. I, I just following your most recent part of the discussion, I know we've been doing this for off and on for a couple of months now. I agree with Ms. Jackson. If you say it's prohibited in the front yard, it's prohibited in the front yard. There is, there are these kinds of fences allowed in industrial and commercial and in various places around the city. So we all have to be careful how we use the word permitted and, and not permitted. That list, I agree with Mark as well, that list about what you're not allowed to do goes on endlessly. We were sitting at city staff meeting the other day and someone said, whoa, why don't we put up a temporary snow fence? And it was like, snow fences, we forgot snow fences. So it's hard to.
We need to, we need to include that on the list.
Yeah, yeah. So it's hard to anticipate what sort of tasteless thing somebody might decide to do in their neighborhood. I understand too, the issue about the slats when we started out, some folks have an automatic feeling that you should put slats in a fence. Well, that works two ways. If you're trying to hide something behind the fence, then maybe you want slats. If you may try to make sure someone doesn't hide behind the fence, then you don't want the slats. So, so making it a very blanket in zones where chain link fences are allowed, you must have slats, we're going to get some unanticipated consequences there as well. I read the comments that you received today, or the weekend I should say, questioning the, the part about the vinyl coated. I had never heard that before. Perhaps if we take a second look at that as well and see about, that's valid, that, you know, Mr. Speed spent a lot of time on planning and zoning commission. I know he's, he has researched those things. So we can take a look at those things as well. Again, I'm not sure how we're ever going to get a totally comprehensive list of unacceptable materials, but, you know, we, we take our best, our best shot at it. And I'm going to remind you that in residential districts, if you're in the front yard, it is a four foot fence. As soon as you get behind the setback, you can go up to six.
Kim, what's the deadline on this, that we have to have this passed?
It's 60 days from the first reading, which was June 10th.
So we have until August the 10th?
What happens if it's not passed by August 9th?
You, you can, yeah, reintroduce it. But also, you can, you could table it, you know, indefinitely without a date while, you know, additional research was being done.
That would open up the pub, the public hearing possibility again. I know you did not have any attendance at that first hearing, but since then you've gotten a lot of good feedback.
As we've gotten closer, there's more and more people have, you know.
So we would have to have it done by the 7th?
The 7th, but there's not another work session in there.
I'm sorry. And I think staff's understanding was of what was supposed to be in the packet tonight was what Ms. Jackson said, that it was allowed in the front yard, vinyl coated and, you know, slatted or whatever. So, you know, I think it probably warrants more attention.
Yeah.
And especially considering the things that, the potential materials that both Jack and Mark brought up, which are not things that we would ever want to allow anywhere.
So I'm, I'm going to suggest, and I'll get what everybody else says, let's, let's table this until we can get a good list of stuff that we don't want. And then maybe we can figure out the wording we want on, on how, you know, what's allowed as far as if it's in the front yard, if it's, if they can paint them, if they can, you know, if it's, they can't be rusted or busted, or if we want to get more detailed into that, that's something we can discuss, which it's not, anything we do, any changes now, if we make any more changes, it's got to come back to the work session. And the next work session is going to be after the deadline for this. So I would suggest let's, let's table this and then get it to where we want it and then start the process over again. Does anybody disagree with that?
Yeah.
Jack, are you okay with that?
Okay, I agree.
Yeah, can I hear what the mayor thought, Tom?
I think it was, it was kind of.
He's in the same room, yeah.
Oh, on tape? Oh, um, yeah, I think that's fine, Jack. In my opinion, it just gives us, it gives Jack and Susan and Bill time to talk about, you know, the, and Mark time to, you know, maybe develop a more comprehensive list of materials we, we do find acceptable and don't. I think there's a lot of public input that, you know, is, is good, good input that is not captured in tonight's packet. So we've got to, you know, I, I think we've got to talk about that. And worst case scenario, tabling it indefinitely, you know, bring it back whenever you've got all that input into a cohesive, you know, vision that makes sense to everybody and all those points are getting hit. And additionally, if you table it indefinitely, it's possible that you could, you know, simply leave this alone till everything's getting rewritten. Because we have a comprehensive rezoning that'll have to happen within the next few years, right, Jack?
Sure.
So, I mean, that's got to happen with our entire zoning code, so.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, the only thing is I think, I think the compromises that they made are good ones. I can live, I can certainly live with no fences in the front. Although I can give you circumstances where chain link fences are in backyard, but they, they are against an open lot and you look at them through the other side, it looks terrible. But that's in the, that's in the minority of things. So I think it's a good compromise. It's a shame that we just, we can't do it based on the fact that we've got to be very careful. And I agree, from my limited experience on the planning commission, we better be ready, do it once, so we don't have to go back and worry about it. So I'm okay with it.
Well, one option, one option would be to, because I think there's still a little work to be done, based on what's in the packet tonight and the work that has been discussed. One option is to try to get it ready for the next legislative meeting, what, Monday?
And? We've got two legislative meetings.
Okay, or to try to get it maybe even until the, you could always table it at that point is my point. You could table it again if, if it's still not where you want it, right?
I would, I wouldn't stop working on it. Let's see if we can get it done. And if we can't, we have two sessions. The 7th is today?
It's on Monday.
7th is a work session, that's on Monday. I mean, we could do, if we have it ready, we could do a special session.
Yeah.
Or if it was ready bef, at the meeting before that.
Yeah.
But it's not, it's not a do or die situation.
No, no.
So, I'm okay with it.
But am I right, Ms. Nichols, that it could come to the table during a legislative session and be tabled at that point if, if it wasn't ready? Or if council didn't feel like it was ready?
If it's on the agenda and, yes.
Well, that's what we.
So staff could keep pushing.
It would have to start over then because it wasn't passed in 60 days. That's all. It would just, it would require.
We have to have it on an agenda anyway, right? Or not?
Um, no, we don't have to have it on there. It would just die.
Just die, okay. All right. Let's see what we can do. If we get a list of stuff, we've got two legislative, no, we've got two meetings. Have, I think that's it. I appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
Oh.
So that'll come from the mayor to them? Yeah, I'll be here, but.
Mr. Riddles, do you have any?
No, I don't.
Anything else? Do you have anything else? Okay. We have two public comments. I'm going to go with Ms. Bratton.
I haven't sent these to you. This is, I'm Lynn Bratton. I live at 303 South Boulevard, resident of the city of Salisbury. I have been concerned about the legislation on fencing. I appreciate your taking more time to delve into it. In addition to my comments, I think even hearing from appraisals, appraisers in the area, getting some feedback on, from fencing companies about pricing, what they're, what they're seeing as trends and that sort of thing would all be good stakeholder conversations when we try to get more input. I hope that the information on life expectancy of vinyl coated chain link fencing, the added cost of this finish, as well as the added expense to install chain link fencing that can be fitted with slats will be examined and considered in the decision-making process. When planning to use slats, the entire fence must be upgraded because it has to be a more substantial fence because the, the slating stops the flow of air. So it has to be a substantially stronger base of a fence in order to put the slats in. It's amazing what you can learn when you start asking questions and making phone calls. Additionally, the life expectancy of those vinyl slats and the potential for mildew and mold, breakage from grass cutting, weed whackers, et cetera, should be considered. My personal research did find, and I did call several different fencing companies in the area, so we're not doing international or national pricing. These are local firms. The vinyl coated is anywhere from 20 to 30% more to in cost. The installation is the same. It's, it's chain link fence is chain link fence. It's just a different product cost. But using an upgraded fence suitable for slats, the cost of the slats and then the additional labor of putting in the slats could easily double the cost of a regular chain link fence. The term galvanized, I think is what we were looking at. The regular galvanized, normal 30 year or more life expectancy chain link fences do have the opportunity to be painted if and when needed. Very easy to do. You pick a color, you can do it with a nap, you know, it's very easy to do. I've done it. But vinyl coated fencing, according to the professionals I spoke with, once they start to disintegrate, you can't coat them. I mean, the, the cracking in the vinyl is there and then it's rusting underneath. Any of you have ever had a rack in a dishwasher and you chipped a little bit of vinyl coating on that rack in your dishwasher, it starts to rust. And that's similar, only on a bigger scale. I, I tried to do pictures. I was a teacher, so I tried to do pictures. I really appreciate that you have, in this most recent one, that you did look at the term welded wire or substantial wire fencing. Welded wire is the term that is in, is an industry term as opposed to hog wire and chicken. Welded wire is, is an industry term. And I appreciate that you would consider allowing the welded wire or substantial wire fencing to be allowed on the perimeters of the property and not in the front. I get that, the perimeters. This is a good alternative for any property owner looking for a quick to install, reasonably priced fence to encourage privacy and discourage trespassing. And I think allowing residents the opportunity to surround personal spaces within their yards with fencing materials is, is in everybody's best interest. I appreciate that. The use of the term other scrap material, I think is something that you guys are now looking at. That however, is vague and open for interpretation, as there are many opportunities for artsy fences using recycled things. And if you, if you Google artsy fences or vintage fences and you go on Pinterest, you could be there for days. And there are a lot of really clever usage and upcycling of what normally would go into a landfill. And one of the things that I'm very proud that our community has embraced, I'm not artsy. I do community theater. I do costume design. I do lots of construction of that part of my art side. That's me, artsy. I can't draw. I can't sing. But I'm proud to say that Salisbury is embracing that whole arts awareness and we're, we're like, I mean, we're fostering it. So I would encourage that some of you look at Pinterest, look at some of the artsy things that are uses of what normally would be somebody's trash and they're done in a very clever and cute and creative and kind of like, woo, why didn't I think of that kind of way? And that's kind of where I want to leave that, is that artsy recycling usage as opposed to other scrap materials just not being available. And I actually had thought of, of snow fencing. So I'd already, I'd already come up with that as an idea at one point. And even those orange plastic things that you see around job sites, that wouldn't be allowed. I don't think, I don't think you'd want that as a fence, that plastic stuff that looks like it goes on six packs of Coca-Cola, you know, the little plastic ringing things that are orange. I appreciate, I mean, I'm a kind of a neophyte in all of this. And I appreciate being able to be a part of the dialogue. And I asked the council and the mayor to take into consideration all the information you can locate from all the stakeholders. And I really, I've been kind of liking this whole getting involved kind of thing. It's interesting. I mean, the whole conversation earlier tonight was fascinating. And there's a lot of things that the normal person in our community doesn't know. That's the backstory. And I appreciate all the work that goes into all of that. So thanks for letting me be here.
Thank you, Lynn, and thank you for your input. We appreciate it. Mr. Enslie?
Thank you. I subscribe to the things that Lynn just said and also the things that Jack Lennox said. With regard to vinyl, you don't want vinyl. You do not want to mandate vinyl. If a person wants to select it, it's fine. But you heard Lynn give the example of a dishwasher and what happens when the vinyl starts to deteriorate or gets cut. And the same thing happens with chain link abrasion or anything that tears that vinyl and that's the beginning of the end. Virtually all chain link that I'm aware of comes galvanized. Virtually all chain link that I'm aware of comes galvanized, and that means probably a 30 or 40-year life, and when it does start to rust, if it does, it's pretty easy to coat it with D'Resto or Rust-Oleum, or rust inhibitive paint, and give it a, a new life. I actually have some that I have coated, just because I thought it made it look better, either popular colors or forest green or black, make it more attractive. As far as slats are concerned, if you've got something you want to hide, then I'd say that's fine, but I wouldn't mandate them, because putting slats in them makes the fence even more noticeable and more imposing. And that brings me to what I think is, is the most important consideration, particularly with front yards, is how imposing do you want the fence to be? If it's a very expensive wrought iron fence and you want to draw attention to it, then maybe you do want it to be imposing. But if you prohibit galvanized, chain link, or other wire fencing, which are 95 percent air, in other words, the least obtrusive, look at what your alternatives are, stockade fence or vinyl fence. Now, you put a stockade fence, or even if it's four feet high, and, or, for that matter, vinyl or whatever, in front of a dwelling, and you're going to see it. I mean, it's imposing, where you can see through other wire-type fences, even, for example, a split rail fence, and people want to keep a pet inside, so they use, I guess you call it hog wire, the two-inch, until you get up close, you don't even see the hog wire. But importantly, I, I think that there are plenty of instances where you really don't want to have the fence be the dominating thing, the most imposing thing, when you look at a neighborhood or a house or whatever. So the, the alternatives to wire fence or galvanized are much more imposing, and I'm not sure that that's meant, leaving people with only that, those choices, that is exempting galvanized or other wire fence, is just leaving you with, with a choice of having a very imposing fence in front of your house. So thank you very much for the opportunity to share that with you.
Thank you, Mr. Inslee. Jack, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
All right, enjoy your time away.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.